We'll be back in session. Brings us up to number six under new business, which is discussion of limiting CUPs in R1. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Mr. Sanders?
Second.
Floor's open. Mr. DeVito.
The reason I brought this up here has to do with both the fact that planning's developing master plans and we're developing our goals for the future. And I feel a couple of things have occurred that should make us pay attention to where we are with our residential zones and our commercial zones. It requires looking at the city as a whole and not just focusing on one segment, be it residential. And I don't think there's been hardly any conversation about commercial. Maybe planning has discussed it. I know we haven't discussed it yet. We do have an issue with commercial in the sense that there's a lot of it sitting around year after year after year, and it doesn't seem to be moving. Now, the realtors I've talked to said residential's moving fairly well. You look at what planning sent us, and I'll just briefly read parts of it. In April of 2009, they showed 120 CUPs in the R1 zone. And I think right now, it's dropped down to approximately 30. The issues I think we have to address is that when we allow so much commercial to appear in our residential zones, it dilutes the value of commercial property. It's much easier for people to come into a residential zone and buy a residential piece of property and set up business in a residential neighborhood than it is to buy a commercial property, which are generally a lot more expensive. We also have the fact that we have a new $10 million school here in this town. We also have the unfortunate situation that our population has been declining. I think we have an opportunity here, and I know it raises the hackles on planning commission members for somebody on the city council to be bringing this issue up. But this really doesn't have anything to do with the commissioners who sit on planning because somewhere previous to 2009, people sitting on planning, all well intentioned, managed to get that number up to 120 CUPs. Now, that's 120 residential properties that have been converted to business properties in residential zones. Those are rather large houses that probably have four and five bedrooms that no longer have the capability for having large families with children acquiring those properties because they had been turned into commercial ventures. So by taking the difference between where we are right now and where we were in 2009, that's 90 residential properties that were not available to families for homes in R1 zones. And those families could have provided children for the schools. They could have provided people paying property taxes. And as Mr. King spoke about in his comments to council, our own vision plan talked about providing more residential properties, both for families and the people who work in this community. So I feel we have an opportunity since the recession has brought a lot of that CUPs down to presently 30. And I think this needs to be something that we need to think about. And that is by setting a cap on how many CUPs we can have in R1. And this will still allow, you know, CUPs to disappear and come back. It'll still allow the planning commissioners to address those CUPs that do come before them. But somehow, the well-intentioned members who have the authority to grant these, and that also includes council because we're the ultimate arbiters on who gets a CUP or not, I don't want to see us move back because the economy's picking up. There's a lot of pressure being built up in the Bentonville Rogers area. There's going to be people looking toward Eureka Springs. And we have so much commercial property sitting vacant. And I feel if we cap the CUPs in the residential zones, that could provide more pressure for people to maybe take an older hotel, do like places have done where they'll go through and take the small rooms, they'll breach the wall, they'll make suites out of those hotels. They can go upscale. I just feel like we have a very good opportunity here now that we're pulling out of the recession to look at the big picture. And maybe it's going to require planning and the city council to have a combined meeting where we all sit down and discuss the big picture here. Because we've pretty much focused on residential and neglected the commercial sector in this community. And I think we have the responsibility to do that. And I feel firmly that the more commerce we allow conducted in residential zones, the less commerce is going to be conducted in commercial zones. So I'm proposing a joint meeting of planning and the city council to get together and look at the big picture. Look at all of these factors, both in residential and commercial, and see how they all impact. They're all interconnected. When we do something in residential, it affects commercial and vice versa. But our focus has seemed to be on CUPs in residential zones, and we pretty much neglected the commercial. And I think we do have responsibility to the community. We have responsibility to the people who work in this community and need affordable housing. I think we have a responsibility to a new high school to provide houses for people with larger families of four and five kids, and there are those properties here. But if they're converted into bed and breakfast, we lose that opportunity. And I think we have a golden opportunity now, and that's why I'd like to see us do something about it.
Mr. Sanders.
Just curious, why did you only zero in on R1 when we have three residential zones? Don't the other two count?
Mr. Green.
Well, the facts are right here that we had 120 CUPs in R1.
Because you specified this on R1.
Right. And that's...
You got a lady man's for me.
That's the most compact neighborhoods we have, the most residential in quality neighborhoods that we have.
Go ahead.
If we are going to do anything, we need to equally hit all three. It isn't right to pick one. If it's restricted in R1, everybody's going to move over to R2 or R3. If you're going to do it, do it right. It's the first time, I agree to saying that. I don't think it's right that we should be limiting people. You're going to get my same song and dance. Some people, especially older people, need to have that little bit of extra money to pay their insurance, pay their property tax, do whatever, survive. If this is coming down on its own, that's fine. I don't see it's right that we would sit there and restrict anything. If it starts to go up, it's still a CUP. It still has to get approval from everybody. I do not like the idea of restricting people and their personal property.
Mr. Mitchell, you're next.
I applaud Mr. DeVito on his... Now, I understand where he was going with it after I sat there and listened, and it made sense. The 200-foot rule, I think, is going to help some in that, in the discussion about the CUPs. I think there's an opportunity there. I also want to take this opportunity to thank planning again and their full membership for all the work and everything they do and the work they do on the CUPs. And as Mr. DeVito did, I think they're very dedicated. A couple of points, and it makes no difference because we do need to move this to a workshop, a joint workshop with planning, so that we can sit down in the appropriate setting, which is not here, and further discuss the details of this. But I really don't think that we're going to find a lot of people with five kids that can afford to buy the Victorian homes in R1. They're pretty well pricey right now, so the chances are slim of that, but it's a good try.
Mr. McClellan.
We have ordinance in place. They can't do any new turf lodging in R1. Can't do it, right?
Correct.
Okay. So that's out. And your B&Bs, how many CUPs, new ones? I'm not talking about rewrites, but how many new ones have been issued in the last two years? Three? Yeah. You know, they're real limited in what they can do now anyway. And it's harder and harder for them to do it because they can't, you know, in order to have the distance from the others, I mean, it just really has... The attrition has taken care of what you're talking about, James, in R1. So I think we're good. I think R1's fine. It's what has been done by planning and the councils in the past have taken care of it.
Mr. Vito.
Well, I'll respectfully disagree with my colleague that even with the 200-foot rule and the size of the usual lots in Eureka Springs, that means that every fifth lots has the potential of having a CUP because most of the lots are about 50-foot frontage. So with 200 feet, every fifth property could become a CUP. And...
It's not true, James. They have to be 200 feet from an existing one. So you've already got, you know, that... It's... Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt. Oh, it does.
Go ahead. Anybody else? Mr. Kirk.
Yeah. I'd like to address this to Mr. DeVito or ask a question. James, what would be, in your mind, a cap somewhere between 30 and 120? I mean, what would be... Have you thought about that? What would be a top-end cap of CUPs in R1 that you would...
James, one.
You know, the number comes up 50 as far as a cap. And let me just, while I have the floor, address something that Mr. Mitchell came up with. We'd previously just been talking about Aspen. Everything I see happening is that this community's going to go upscale, so we're going to attract a pretty well-heeled clientele that's going to be able to afford those Victorians with four and five bedrooms. I mean, that's the direction this city is moving in. We're going to see... That, I think, is going to be the future of this community. And I think we have an opportunity to get ahead of it, you know? We tend to play catch-up here. We don't have a long-range plan. We're not pounding past the end of our nose. We don't have a one-year plan. We don't have a five-year plan. We don't have a 10-year plan. We basically don't have a plan at all. So I think it behooves us, and is in the best interest of this community, to have a workshop on these things and start to develop a master plan that businesses can come here and see where we're headed, residents can see where we're headed. Right now, we don't have any goals set out there for this community, and I think it's important that we do start developing. As we're working off a vision plan that's 20-some years old, that really wasn't a master plan in the true sense of the word, I just feel like we have an opportunity before that stuff starts to hit us. And it will hit us. Every indication, the way that northwest Arkansas is growing and the type of people that are starting to find out about Eureka Springs is pyrogyros. If anybody went to the show when they were here, the first things that came out of their mouth was, "What a great town." I guess this city is one of those "who knew" cities. And that's going to keep happening more and more and more. And people with the resources to locate here are going to come here. And we can sit here and wait and try and play catch-up, or we can get ahead of the game and try and do something about it and plan the future of this community.
Is that a motion or something?
Mr. Sanders. Go ahead.
I agree with James. I'm certainly willing to participate in a discussion on planning with planning and the city council. Personally, it's something I only brought up with the mayor. If we're going to have a discussion like this, we really do need a current zoning map. We don't have one. I would dearly... Yes, one of the... I mean, me personally...
Thought we were having one developed.
Me personally, hanging over my desk. I need a current zoning map that shows me where all these zones are and what has been changed and what hasn't. And I think without that, we can't have a sensible discussion. I assume that McClellan Engineers has one of these or somewhere. There must be a zoning map. And if there isn't, I think somebody should be detailed to come up with one or an updated one because I don't see how we can have this discussion, and I'm all for it. But I don't see how we can have this discussion unless each one of us has a map in front of us so we can address the problem intelligently.
Is that a motion?
Well, I don't know whether I can make a motion to that, in fact, because it's probably going to cost somebody money. Yeah.
Further discussion?
I don't know. Advice, please? How do we go forward with this?
Can we get an update on the map since this was brought up?
One at a time. Who's got the floor?
Well, I had...
Ms. Zeller hasn't yielded.
I had the floor, but can someone advise me on how we go forward in accomplishing this goal?
We need to ask that.
That's the most current one on the wall right now, did I understand?
Yeah. Well, can... That one, is that one current?
I can't answer that.
Well, then, can somebody duplicate that and make seven copies of it?
The council did give money towards getting a new zoning map, and we've been waiting for the county to finish their aerial photography that they told us was going to be finished last year, and it's still not finished. And now it's finished, and some of it's not right. And so we didn't want to pay the same money that the county was already paying for the aerial photography because once we have that, then we overlay the things from McClellan. And so we've been working on this project for three years, and we're not finished yet. And this particular map has 14 zoning changes since it was written that are not currently on it.
Well, then, how far away are we from getting a map?
About three years.
Carroll County Farm Court? Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we set a workshop sometime in the near future, including planning and the city council, to try and develop some type of a direction. Second.
Okay. May I just second it? You've heard a discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Alright, that brings us to number seven, which is discussion of the land bank. Motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor's open. There he is, right there, Mr....
Good evening. Mayor, council? Uh... Which one are we up to?
Land Bank.
We're up for Land Bank.
Okay. I got a somewhat revised copy of this. And there's not much changed. Oops. I got one printed this wrong.
Now, one thing that... There's a couple of changes, but one that may not be... No one has seen yet here at the table is I thought it might be a good idea to de-formalize the committee. Whereas we were going to have it appointed by the mayor and that confirmed by the council, since it is just an advisory committee, I thought it might be easier to have it consist of the director of Parks and Recreation, alderperson, director of Public Works, director of Finance, and up to three at-large members appointed by the committee. That seemed to be... To seem to make it, to simplify it to some effect, that since we had three city employees on this committee and an alderperson, it seemed that there would just be very few that would need to be appointed. And plus, it eliminates the term limitations. If someone doesn't want to be on it anymore, then they just don't have to be on it anymore.
So we're back to seven from six, which was back to seven?
Yeah, we're back to seven. A potential of seven.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just so I could understand, does the land bank committee need to be separate from the parks committee? It can't... It couldn't be the same membership as the parks committee and like planning and zoning just call a separate meeting, and then you just reconvene and you just do the business? Does it have to be?
Of course, it doesn't have to be. I think that there's a different focus on this. I think the parks commission has enough on their table to where...
Okay.
That would be my thought. And this adds an alderman, it adds a director of finance, it adds a public works, and then adds some at-large people, which may be someone in real estate, could be someone else has another interest. But we can be more inclusive, people who otherwise don't want to serve on a commission but just don't mind, you know, the few meetings that we potentially could have. Unless there's a legal reason for there to be something other than a...
Mr. Sanders. Is there some reason why you took out of section one the method for appointing the members of this committee and filling vacancies?
Yes, I thought it simplified the whole matter.
Well, it simplified it, but it took out the procedure for getting this done. And I don't know, who decides who is going to be on this committee?
Well, the way I had it written here, and of course, that's certainly up to you all how you'd want to do it, but my idea for simplification was just to have these founding members and then have them appoint three or select three at-large people to be on.
Okay. So the director of the parks commission and the Eureka Springs alderperson will be selected by the city council?
I would think so.
And the director of the finance, and then up to three at-large members appointed by the committee that's already formed here, the land bank committee?
Correct.
Will appoint their other three members?
No. I see Mr. Weaver is interested in this.
I think you may create yourself a problem by what you've just done with section four. Section four, you're directing city funds only at the commission's approval, basically. So it's not just that the committee has the ability to make recommendations. It does have the power to not spend or spend. And so you're putting city funds into someone's hands who potentially have not been approved by either this board or the mayor directly.
So much for that simplification. Back to the drawing board.
It's drawing board.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Should we make that?
Yeah.
Do you want to send this to...
Yeah, yeah. I think it's been back and forth and back and forth. But... A motion? That's fine.
Yes, sir.
Back to the drawing board. Go ahead and make a formal motion there.
I'd like to make a motion that the director of Parks get with the city attorney and redraft ordinance number 2140 and then bring it back to council.
Your second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Moves us to number eight, license and discussion licenses for multifamily housing.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
I would like to take this opportunity to ask Mr. Ed Leswig to introduce the concept of multifamily housing and let everybody here at the table understand it. Mr. Leswig.
This goes back about a year or two ago. We came aware as the planning commission that there were a requirement in R1 for multifamily dwellings to be conditional uses. We knew that there were multifamily dwellings in R1, and none of them were conditional uses. So going through, trying to figure out which ones existed prior to the first ordinance in the mid-'70s, which ones came afterwards, seemed to me to be an insurmountable task. So we decided to go the record or the method of just approving all of them as preconditioned conditional uses. We did, however, start talking about their applying for licenses and found out that no multi-use family has a user's license. So we thought that was a little unreasonable. And the other issue that came up was certificates of occupancy. Since a B&B in Eureka Springs, which caters to visitors, has to have a business license to conduct business and has to have a certificate of occupancy, we thought the least that we should be requiring from multifamily dwellings that house residents is the same thing, that they have a business license and they have a certificate of occupancy. On that basis, we drafted the document that you have here incorporating definitions of a dwelling unit, et cetera.
Mr. Mitchell.
I commend you on, and planning, on going through things and looking at it. And we've had some discussion here a little bit earlier from Mr. DeVito about R1 and about multifamily, about affordable housing. And here we have one standard over here for B&Bs to treat their guests and be sure they have certificate of occupancies and they have smoke detectors and fire detectors and fire suppression issues over here. And then we have this whole category of people over here that we want to have affordable housing for that there's no... There's nothing for them. So how do we know that they have smoke detectors in there or the electrical wiring isn't exposed or what's going on? And if the city is accountable for the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants, it would make sense that we should at least have some review of properties within the city, especially since a lot of these properties are very old homes that have been here for many years. And we're pretty well aware, if anybody has tried to restore one of them, what you can run into. What's going on in these multifamily places that are being carved up and we're putting people into them? Are we putting people... Are we putting people into fire traps? Are we putting them into less-than-desirable housing? I don't know. I don't think the issue is going to be such a burden on landlords to get a certificate of occupancy, per se. I could be totally wrong. I guess we're going to find out. But I think it behooves us to not just brush this issue off, but to really give it some consideration as to an area that deserves intense scrutiny.
Do we have an idea... What's a typical business license fee for this?
I drafted a... A B&B currently pays a business license of $75 per annum. And what we've recommended is a base charge, which includes the first three units of $65, and then $5 for each additional unit, four through six, and then $2.50 for any more than seven, for units seven and above.
And then plus $2.50 per each unit?
Everyone's seven and above. Most of the ones in R1 are four- and five-unit dwellings. So if you look at that, it would be $75. So if you look at that, it would be $75 for, for the, if we assume that is the mean number.
And that's for the entire unit, multifamily unit?
Well, dwelling units in the building and it includes the complex, if you will.
Okay. The, the other question I have then is, I guess the big cost there is a certificate of occupancy. What would you, what would you think and what has planning thought that maybe the typical cost would be? What are some of the issues that will, that an owner of a multifamily dwelling would be faced with to comply with law?
The potential would be, of course, based upon a review by the building official and the fire marshal. And it would be depending upon the condition of the wiring and the safety features in the property. I don't think I'm qualified to forecast what that potential cost would be.
Well, I guess what I'm alluding to, what I'm aiming at here is if we have older homes and we have, if it's, I don't know, if it has aluminum wiring or if it has, you know, wiring that needs to be upgraded or plumbing that needs to be upgraded or it needs to have fire alarms or smoke alarms. And we, if we start applying that to these units, and it could be costly, it could be real costly. I'm not saying it's not needed, I'm just saying it could be costly.
Yes, I think there are some sublative that the council has on how they can have that level of enforcement done, but I think it is a prerequisite on, mandatory, I would say, on behalf of the city council to protect the welfare of the citizens. And I would also, if I may, Mr. Perkey Pyle before, I would question the fact that we have a shortage of housing in Eureka Springs.
If I could continue just with one more piece. What do you define that complex as? Is that one building or is it multiple buildings on one, at one site separated by walkways?
The second.
The second?
Yeah, it can be anything from a single building to a complex of buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Having a bed and breakfast and having bought it five years ago, I was required to have the building inspector come out to look at the building. I had to have in each room a fire extinguisher, I had to have a smoke detector. And basically, he just walked around the structure to be sure it was habitable. It was, it was not invasive, it was not invasive. I was totally shocked. I thought it would be much more intense. I thought I was gonna get one of those. Because the building inspector that came out, they did the building inspection for me to buy the place was unbelievable. I mean, he was everywhere with every little thing. But when I got my certificate of occupancy, it was, it was really very minimal. I was really surprised. Again, it was fire and safety and, and, and I could be totally wrong, but I didn't think it was that bad.
Mr. McLean.
The point was made that some of these are very old buildings in Eureka. I wouldn't be surprised if we had some of these very old buildings that the wiring was simply wires strung through the wall with no BX, no nothing. And they're real fire hazards. And I think we, as a city, have a responsibility to make sure that these buildings are safe. And I think that this ordinance very definitely needs a definition of a multifamily dwelling as opposed to a weekly rental or a monthly rental, et cetera. A multifamily dwelling has to be something entirely different than that. So we needed a definition here. And I remember a long time ago when I was in the city council, we had a discussion of building. And I had a friend who built very upscale houses in the Arlington, in the Chicago suburban area. And I was on the phone with him and I said, Floyd, I said, what is the southern building code? How is it different from the one in Illinois? And he said, the southern building code is if you can't afford to build right. And I don't know whether that was true, but I'm beginning to, sometimes I worry about whether we are allowing things that aren't fire safe in this town. And this might be one of them if we're rehabbing these old buildings into multifamily units. I think we need to be careful of this for legal liability, if nothing else, to make sure they're safe.
Mr. Perkey Pyle.
I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we follow the southern building code anymore.
Universal.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's...
Well, I don't know, because I'm not following up on it, but I, I, the point of it was the standards were less in the south than they are in the north, which is okay if it's your house, but if you're having somebody else live in it, that's another thing.
Mr. McLemone.
Are there any HUD guidelines on any of this? I know that fallen under HUD that you think you have to have more than four units in a complex to...
This isn't based on HUD, this is based on what I've been able, when I was able to pick out from various codes in the state of Arkansas and incorporate for Eureka Springs. And our, our current ordinance defines a multifamily dwelling as three units or more.
I think, I think anything more than that to be constructed has to be in R3. I don't think you can do more than four units in R1 or R, whether it's rehabbing something or, I think four is our ceiling. If there's something...
Five units, five units is the maximum for a B&amp;B.
I know, I think there's something...
But there's no limit that I've been able to find in the, in the books for, again, you have to recognize that as I said in my opening statement, multifamily dwellings in R1 are a conditional use. There are no conditional uses issued. Do you remember how many we found?
They were grandfathered then.
They were grandfathered.
Sure.
Well, some of them were grandfathered. We ended up grandfathering all of them.
I think in R1, they only allow duplexes as the largest capacity. So if you do go through and inspect all the multifamily units, I would assume there needs to be some type of a time schedule that X number of years down the road, you gotta go back and do it again.
Currently for B&amp;Bs, and I assume the same thing would apply on apartment houses on transfer of ownership, it would have to be redone.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell.
I'd like to make the motion that this multifamily housing be referred to the city attorney for inclusion into a properly worded and formatted ordinance.
No second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carried. To Mr. Weaver. You've earned your money this time, Mr. Weaver. Not that you don't, Weaver.
You're not giving any kickbacks to Mr. Mitchell, are you?
Okay, that brings us to number nine. Restrictions in a C3 quiet commercial, motion to discuss.
Second.
I thought we did that.
Anybody want to open the door? Mr. Mitchell.
This was the two issues that came up on that list of restrictions specifically to the whole category of C3 and had to do with the hours of operation and also the animals. And we had received something, and we're probably not gonna find it in all of our paperwork right now, but we had received something from planning where they had zeroed in on cleaning up, I think it was seven to nine o'clock, and they came up with some really good wording that the doors were closed and all of that. So without belaboring this too much, it would probably behoove us to ask that Beverly get with the city attorney and make the appropriate changes to the code and then it come back to the table so we can vote on it. That's a motion.
Second.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moves us on to number 10. The resolution for Parks, the Parks grant in reference to the bath, I'm sorry, the bathhouse, motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open.
Good evening again.
Mr. Levine.
I am passing out a resolution that is a template that has been provided by the general improvement fund that is being administered through the rural development. And we are pining for a grant for $150,000 to build a, a new bathhouse slash shower, shower house at Lake Leatherwood. You have a, a drawing, a conceptual drawing, you also have a floor plan. Part of the Lake Leatherwood master plan was to provide a center for education, interpretive type nature studies. And we plan to do that in the old CCC bathhouse. In order to move everything out of that bathhouse, all the plumbing and all the shower facilities and our laundry, we need a new building. And there is no cost at all to the city. It's a $150,000 grant and it is, I hate to say, but it's free money.
Right?
Yes, sir.
It's a, it's a beautiful building and since it doesn't cost us anything, it would be kind of like a no-brainer not to give you your resolution. But what do you do when you have a bathhouse like this that's way out there? How do you handle security?
We have been very fortunate is that we have not had any type of vandalism. We leave our, our bathhouse and the bathrooms open all on our, we do have, no, but we'd also have the capabilities with our wireless system that we've got here in town that we could provide real-time security cameras that'll bounce from Leatherwood up to the water tower that'll make itself over to the PD.
Would this be open 24/7 or would it be just...
Yes.
Oh, it would be. So, so really, security could be kind of important if you...
Yes, well, we have campers there and...
Just, I just was wondering.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
Mr. McLemone.
Bruce, what, again, was, you done with the old bathhouse?
We're gonna repurpose, as they call it, to provide classrooms, perhaps a CCC, civilian conservation corps museum, hold seminars there, make it kind of a learning center.
Kind of off the wall, how long is our lease on Lake Leatherwood until when?
In perpetuity, forever.
Okay, so it got changed from that 100 years or whatever originally was?
There was a private lease.
Oh, okay.
That was sort of, I think it was 25 years.
So we can't do all this and have them snatch it from us?
No, the only way that we can have it snatched from us if we do not continue to use it as a, for the purpose it was intended, which is for recreation, recreation.
Mr. Levine.
I'd move to sign this resolution and a number and approve it on its reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Could I have a copy of the resolution, please?
I'm sorry?
Have a copy of the resolution.
Here's, here's another one here.
The number will be 628. Be it resolved by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, excuse me, be it resolved by the city council, Eureka Springs, state of Arkansas, a resolution entitled, Lake Leatherwood City Park ADA compliant bathhouse. A resolution authorizing the mayor of Eureka Springs, Arkansas to apply for a grant on behalf of the Eureka Springs community. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs has determined that the Eureka Springs community meets eligibility requirements necessary to apply for a grant under the GIF-funded Community Enhancement Grant. And whereas the Eureka Springs community has presented plans to build a new bathhouse in the style of the existing civilian conservation corps building, the new building will be completely ADA accessible and have the ability to be used year-round and allow the old building to be repurposed as a nature education center in accordance with the Lake Leatherwood City Park master plan. And whereas the city council of Eureka Springs recognizes the need for the project, concurs with its importance and supports the Eureka Springs community in its efforts to proceed with the same. And therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Eureka Springs is hereby authorized to submit an application of formal request to the Arkansas Rural Development Commission for purposes of securing state grant funds in the amount of $150,000 to aid and assist the Eureka Springs community in executing the proposed project described herein, and that the mayor of Eureka Springs is further authorized to administer the grant funds for the same project.
Thank you very much. Moves us on to agenda sitting. Mr. DeVito.
We presently have a moratorium on the tour, tour ordinance. I would like to, and that's not the step-on tour guides, it's the van tours and things like that. I'd like to put an item on the agenda to discuss the tour ordinance.
Second.
Is that it, Mr. DeVito's out?
That's it.
Mr. McLemone.
I brought it up last time and you were, instead of putting it on the agenda, you were gonna talk to Park, I mean, a public works about the crosswalks.
I did talk to him. He's supposed to give me an answer in the morning or at least some indication of an answer.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, I told him every place you want to renew the old ones and put in a new one at the bottom of new deal.
I need to get some clarification on what Mr. DeVito said. We do...
Well, it's not an ordinance, it's just the licensing of tour operators, like Michelle and those tours.
Okay. So is it the mor, is it the resolution for the moratorium that you're...
It's in reference to the moratorium, correct.
So it's not an ordinance, it's the resolution, because there are two things happening and I'm trying to sort out what it is that you want to...
It's addressing the moratorium. If we end up with an ordinance, so be it.
Yes, sir. Two items. One, if we haven't overloaded our poor city attorney, the clean city ordinance in, in its final format since we finished the workshop. So I'd like to have it on there. If, if it's not ready, we'll just table it, but I need it as an agenda item.
I'll second.
And then the second one is that it's about time in our MBO priority process that the commissions and department heads pop back in to tell us the status of their, their own identified priorities up through the third quarter. If we're gonna consistently keep with trying to work on an MBO-type system and people hold themselves accountable to that. So it would be a, a reporting from department heads and commissions on updating their priorities.
In person or in writing?
Either way, I'll, I'll be nice. I need your second.
Yeah, I'll second, and as long as it's in, it can be in person or in writing.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Perkey Pyle, since you're out, I mean, you're not here. Oh, wait, you're here. Yes, sir.
I have nothing, thank you, no.
Mr. Snyder.
I'd like to add a discussion to the agenda on fluoride.
I'll second that.
Anything else?
Nope.
Ms. Allen.
No, not anything.
Counsel comments, Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to correct my error on stating that Veterans Day was not a federal holiday. It is.
Any further? Mr. McLemone.
Nothing.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, I'd like to take just a very brief moment to again, go back and point out something I think is very important, and that's the fact that the groups of citizens who came before council, who were concerned about the closure of Spring Street and the professional adult manner in which they handled that whole process, how they identified themselves, how they organized the petition, how they came to council with their concerns on the occasions was, was exemplary. It was handled remarkably well. And when citizens have a concern and band together correctly and present that concern in an adult manner, it's truly appreciated and it has a tendency of getting a lot of attention. However, when citizens hide behind, citizens organized for a peaceful Eureka, take out a paid advertisement in the paper selectively targeting a group of tourists that we worked very hard for and that we tried to get here to help with our taxes and our businesses and go about it in this manner, it, it's really wrong. I highly recommend that the people that are citizens organized for a peaceful Eureka, considering taking a look and are talking to those people that were involved in the Spring Street closure so they can learn how to appropriately do it. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Perkypal.
I'd like to say I recently became involved and became aware of Carroll County Airport and its potential importance to commerce here in the city, bringing people in that like to fly in from Tulsa, Kansas City, Dallas, Houston, just to spur the moment. They usually, you know, two to four people. And when they come here, they all want to come to Eureka Springs. So I think everything we can do to kind of keep that connection alive and, and well between Carroll County Airport and the city of Eureka Springs, I think we should do everything we can in our power to keep that going.
Thank you, sir. Snyder.
I'd like to thank everyone, all zillion of you, who showed up to the STO fundraiser last week. It was incredible. For a town of, what, 2,100 people to raise $55,000 fighting a big utility company, I'm just so proud to be a part of this kind of group of people. It was incredible. It was awesome. And at that, James did apologize to me in regards to Veterans Day. Then he bit me on my owl chair and I whacked him with my number 19 voting thing. So that was taken care of. Had an awesome, awesome weekend. I wish everybody would learn to pull together and take turns, but it was an incredible one. And I have copies here. I'm not reading the whole thing, so don't have heart failure, of the history of Veterans Day, just because I'm wearing my Veterans Day shirt. But just for any doubters out there, this started with Armistice Day in 1918. And it has gone through many reincarnations, so to speak, through various presidents. Originally, World War I, of course, was the only war we were ever going to have like that. Unfortunately, that's not the way it worked. But it went through many, many, many incarnations and additions and adding to, and this is why I threw such a fit. And he said, well, it's not like it's a federal holiday. I'm sorry. I had uncles die in the trenches, grandfathers, the whole nine yards. I mean, you know, only since 1918. So if you ever want a copy, go to the VA and they have a page of the whole history. And it's fascinating. It's really, really interesting. But at least all of us now have a copy for come November when we have our Veterans Day parade. That's it.
Ms. Allen.
Yes, this is my new book, A Contemporary Romance, by the name of, it's called Maddie's Choice. It will be for sale October the 5th at the Book Nook where there's going to be a book signing and you'll get a chance to sample mock apple pie, which is one of the things in this book. And believe me, it wasn't easy to make. And it'll also be for sale at the Eureka Springs Historical Museum in about two weeks. So that's all I have to say.
Congratulations.
Author, author, author.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I want to sign.
Let me give a quick report on the first ever Eureka Springs Motorcycle Art Show. What we did is we put the show together, we actually been working on this for about two years, and we were trying to figure out a way to meld in together our arts culture that we have here in Eureka Springs and our ever growing, and I'll make that very clear, ever growing and soon to be growing more since the state is starting to push it this year, motorcycle tourism. And I know there's a group of folks out there that don't want to hear that, but it's a fact of life and it's going to happen. I, I think Mr. Mitchell had an occasion this weekend to have four professionals, very esteemed professionals, stay at his place. Everyone knows he's on nasty motorcycles. I don't think what the general public understands, or at least part of the general public understands that everybody that rides these motorcycles first has to be able to afford them, okay? Secondly, they have to haul them around or ride them somewhere. Thirdly, you have to make at least 40,000 bucks a year to afford one of these motorcycles and keep it in running condition. And granted, this weekend, I seen some very, very nice, in just an estimate, $300,000 to $600,000 motor home slash toy haulers towing SUVs behind them with motorcycles towed behind the SUVs. All these folks were staying locally. They were paying, they paid everybody's bills for the weekend except for the ones that didn't want them in their shops. I think there was only 30 citations issued this weekend and most of them were, I say citations, that could be written warnings all the way up to a citation for in noisiness violations or disorderly conduct. Y'all can check with Chief Hyatt on that one at your leisure. Back to the art show. We had Friday and a Saturday. We had about 200 visitors in both days, actually about 207 to be exact, I believe. We had six regional artists. We had five, we had six local artists, prestigious, prestigious, I can't, it's hard to say, the good guys. They're, they're here local. We had one out of state gentleman who came in from Oklahoma City that was a highly esteemed among the art community in, in as much as he is internationally known for having his art pieces on the show, a TV show called Sons of Anarchy. They were actually parts of the set, so he has received national recognition for that. Every single person down there, every artist, had a great time. It was great fellowship together. They sit around, they talk, they laugh, they carry it on. Even the ones that didn't sell anything had a good time. And we've had commitments from every single person down there to come back next year, plus the ones that we have had commitments for the 2014 that didn't get to make this There were several original pieces purchased from a couple of the folks. I bought one that I've been looking at for two years and I've not seen it for two years, but I wouldn't, I told him he wasn't going to get away with it out the door before I got my hands on it. So now I own it, an original Ron Morgan. So Mr. Morgan, kudos to you, sir. It was a great show. We had a good bunch of comments about the hog rider that was sitting on the trailer out in the parking lot. I, I bet there was more pictures taken by that than anywhere else in town this weekend because it was a very unique, very heavy piece of machinery. When I went down to pick it up, I had to, I thought I was just going to pull it up on the trailer where they come along and me, and I, I was outdone. I had to get a record to actually lift it up on the trailer because it weighed about 1,200 to 1,500 pounds. And then I had to go back and take it off with a record. So it, it was good advertisement for this, for the, the art show. I think the city has got another, another event that is going, going to keep growing. And we're going to make it grow and, and it's going to be a good quality event. There was no trash in this, in this show. I guarantee you. With that done and said, let me give you a list of events that's going to take place on 9/25. Parking Space Fee, 10 in the workshop at 10N on Council Room. On the 28th, Eureka Palooza, Leatherwood Fields. 10, 3 through 6 Corvette Weekend. 10:05 Oktoberfest in Courthouse Parking Lot, North Side Lot. And 10:05 is Drumming in the Park, 6 to 8 p.m. And unless there's a lot more to talk about, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.[1676.76]